One meeting of the Watertown Board of Education is now in session. Please rise as Mr. Makowski leads us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Mr. Makowski?
Here.
Mr. Flaherty?
Here.
Ms. Rinaldi?
Here.
Ms. Wilk?
Here.
Ms. Rosa?
Here.
Ms. Crotty?
Here.
Ms. Eastman?
Here.
And Mr. Malhouti?
Here.
Thank you, Ms. Davidson. Moving on to item D, on Friday, board members received the minutes from the last two Board of Education meetings. Is there a motion for the January 11th meeting?
Yes, Madam Chair, I move that the board approve the minutes of the January 11th, 2021 regular meeting as presented by Ms. Davidson.
Thank you, Mrs. Rinaldi. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Wilk. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Is there a motion for the January 12th meeting?
Yes, Madam Chair, I move that the board approve the minutes of the January 12th, 2021 special meeting as presented by Ms. Davidson.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Before we move on, I would just like to thank Ms. Davidson for all of her work in transcribing all of the testimony and all of the remarks that have been made in the last four or five months of meetings. So I just wanted to extend a a thank you and an appreciation from the Board of Ed for all of your work on that. Moving on to item E, a report from District Council Representative. Natalie?
Good evening, everyone. John Trumbull, JTPS staff was thrilled to welcome back our amazing students. They were impressed by the students' ability to transition back to school so easily. In visiting classrooms, they were greeted by happy teachers, paraprofessionals, and students. On Friday, the Ruler Committee presented the Meta Moment as the next step in their rollout. The goal of the Meta Moment is to create more time so that one can move away from using automatic, uncontrolled, ineffective strategies and instead move closer to conscious, intentional, effective strategies when confronted with a stressful situation. The master strategies one can use anytime, anywhere are breathing positive reappraisal and positive self-talk. Polk, this past Tuesday marked the return to in-person learning for the majority of Polk School students. Teachers and children alike were enthusiastic about being back together again after nearly two months of distance learning. Polk staff greeted kids at arrival with signs, music, and dancing. The overall spirit in the building was a joyful one. Without skipping a beat, students demonstrated their ability to follow the necessary safety protocols and immediately re-engaged with their peers and jumped into learning. In celebration of the return to in-person learning, the Polk Student Council planned a Spirit Week for all students in person and remote to enjoy. Tuesday kicked off with Pyjama Day, a fitting way to transition back to learning in the building by bringing a little bit of comfort of home. Wednesday found them all rocking wacky combinations during Mitch Mat Day while Thursday was spent twinning with peers. They rounded out the week on Friday by demonstrating Watertown pride by sporting clothing in the traditional orange and black or sporting Polk blue. Judson, Mrs. Raymond says it has been so nice to see all the smiles and hear the laughter that fills the hallways and classrooms since Judson students are now back in the building. Students and staff members are doing a great job with all of the safety precautions that are in place. The teachers continue to amaze and go above and beyond for their students. The lessons are fun, engaging, and extremely informative. Teachers are being creative with their lesson planning to include the voluntary remote learners at home. The District Ruler Implementation Committee met on Tuesday, January 19th, 2021 to learn about the next anchor tool in Ruler, the Meta Moment. Judson's Ruler Implementation Team will roll out the Meta Moment to staff in the February faculty meeting. On Tuesday, January 19th, 2021, Mary Graziano joined Judson as the new building intern from the University of Bridgeport. Mary comes to Judson with a wealth of knowledge from her previous career and is very excited to jump into the world of education. Judson is so happy to have her. Swift, the Swift School Counselor has designed a short survey to be distributed to students upon their return last week. The survey will help to track patterns of interest and concern. The purpose of the survey is actually twofold. Information gleaned from the results will help counselors and teachers to address common themes that students are expressing and craft lessons and interventions to assist. The other purpose is to let students know that they care about their emotional health and that others share the same feelings. They hope this encourages students to seek advice, seek assistance from adults when they are worried or afraid. Last week at Swift, the newest members of the Swift Chapter of the National Junior Honor Society were inducted during a remote ceremony. These eighth graders earned this honor through their hard work and diligence to their studies. To earn and maintain this status, members are expected to earn high honors as well as demonstrate the five tenants of the Honor Society: scholarship, leadership, citizenship, character, and service. Swift is proud of these students and are grateful to their families for their support. Watertown High School, high school staff members were so delighted to welcome students back last week. Throughout the school day, teachers engaged consistently with students who were in person as well as remote students who are online. It was wonderful to have WHOHS students' energy back in the building as well as on the screen. The WHOHS Interact Club held a food drive last week, including a collection event last Saturday. The club collected a large number of food items for the Watertown Food Bank. WHOHS is so proud of students for continuing to contribute to our community during the pandemic. Junior Emmeline Osborne has placed second in the whole state for this year's Veterans of Foreign Wars Voice of Democracy Speech Contest. This is Emmeline's second year in a row placing second in the entire state. Emmeline wrote an insightful and inspiring speech about this year's theme, "Is This the Country That the Founders Envisioned?" WHOHS is so proud that Emmeline's work was recognized at the state level. The high school is preparing the program of studies for the upcoming school year, and within the next few weeks, student course selection will begin for the 2021-22 school year. WHOHS students have been utilizing the district's homework helpline for assistance with classwork, and we are glad that this resource is helping students during the after-school hours. Athletics practices have begun today, Monday, January 25th. We are so glad that students have the opportunity to take to the field, track, court, pool, and ice again. Thank you.
Thank you, Natalie. Does anybody have any questions for Natalie at this time? All right. Thank you very much. Moving on to item F, Superintendent's Recommendations and Report. Well, tonight, I would like to officially extend a warm welcome to Dr. Villanueva on her first official day as Superintendent of Watertown Public Schools. What a meeting for your first one. Welcome, Dr. Villanueva. The floor is yours.
Thank you. I can't wait, and I'm so happy to be here. I'm going to do the recommendations and reports to hand over to Dr. Parlato momentarily, but I just want to say thank you, Ms. Crotty, and to everyone for such a wonderful and warm welcome today. It's been absolutely energizing and productive, and first day on the job, I'm trying to meet as many administrative team members as possible. And tomorrow, I'm hoping to go into schools and start visiting. But I have to mention, though, this evening, Ms. Collier's second-grade class at John Trumbull made me a little welcome booklet. And, you know, they shared everything about John Trumbull, from The Tiger to all sorts of reading that they do, but two little comments stood out. One of the students wrote, "We spread joy," and another student wrote, "We are love." So, you know, with those two comments, I think that was a pretty fantastic first day. So thank you for the warm welcome. And I hand it over to Dr. Parlato to give her update on the recommendations.
Thank you.
Thank you, and good evening, everyone. Our district welcomes Dr. Villanueva to her new position and wishes her the very best as she gets to know our students, families, and staff. We had, as Natalie mentioned, a very smooth reopening of schools this week and last week. We are so glad to have students back in our buildings. Our district homework helpline was up and running last week, and it will continue for the next three weeks in the evenings on Monday through Thursday from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. with live teacher assistance in English, Science, Social Studies, Math, and World Language, which is a wonderful service that we're providing these days. This weekend, I sent out to all families our new Watertown Public Schools Community Resource Guide. This guide has information about each school, tips for technology troubleshooting, questions and answers about the meal distribution program, and social and emotional supports available at each school and in our community. We also have this guide available on the website for each school. Also, as the school has mentioned, we will be emphasizing, in the next few weeks especially, hand sanitizing, mask-wearing, social distancing, and wiping down of high-touch surfaces. I participate in conference calls with the Department of Public Health as well as the Torrington Area Health Department. Both of these organizations have made it very clear that we need to be very on point with our mitigation strategies, given the contagiousness of the variants of the coronavirus. So we'll make sure that everyone has their masks on. We'll make sure that hand washing is very important, hand sanitizing very important, so that we can keep our schools open as long as we possibly can. And finally, I'd like to thank the board for entrusting me with the position of interim superintendent for the past six weeks. And also, I'd like to thank our students, families, and community members for their support during this time as well. Thank you.
Does anybody have any questions for Dr. Parlato at this time?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Rob.
Not really a question, but I just want to thank you, Dr. Parlato, for, we know you wear many hats in the district. You just don't have to wear them all at once, and we recognize that. So, you know, we really appreciate, you know, just jumping through hoops and, you know, just doing it with, you know, grit and passion and everything else, and for stepping up again. So thank you.
Thank you for saying that.
Thank you. Any other board members have questions for Dr. Parlato? Okay, I would echo Rob's sentiments for sure. Dr. Parlato, I also want to thank you in advance of this coming, the rest of this week, for your help during the transition time with Dr. Villanueva, and we look forward to honoring all the work that you have done for the district at our next board meeting. So you have that to look forward to on February 8th. So thank you very much. Moving on to item G, the Capital Improvement Plan Priorities. Board members received a memo on Friday from Dr. Parlato and Mr. Faella outlining the capital improvement priorities and their associated costs. And earlier this evening, the Facilities Committee met to discuss them. At this time, I'd like to ask that we hold off on the final presentation to the board until a few additional questions of the Facilities Committee can be addressed. Dr. Villanueva, do you have anything to add to that?
I don't have much to add. Under the, we are prioritizing our projects in most urgent to least urgent, but it's important to note that all of the projects are quite important and should move forward. So at this point in time, Mr. Faella and I will dig into the numbers carefully to bring up some more detailed and exact figures that we'll be able to present to the Board of Education to move forward to the town.
Thank you so much. Do board members have anything else they want to ask or add at this time in relation to that? Okay, thank you to Dr. Parlato and to Mr. Faella for their presentation earlier this evening to the Facilities Committee. Moving on to item H, this item of discussion, Mascot Committee Recommendations. This is the time in the meeting where we will review the recommendations that we hope to vote on this evening. So to review, in response to a public request to change the Watertown High School mascot, the Board of Education established the Watertown Public Schools Mascot Committee to begin a process that would examine the use of the current Indian name and mascot. The purpose of the committee was to engage the community in discussion with the assistance of experts in the field on the subjects of race, culture, and the use of a Native American school mascot and name. The committee's goal was to inform the Board of Ed of their findings on the matter, and then to present the board their recommendations about the current use of the Indian name and mascot. After a five-month process and deliberations, the committee made the following recommendations to the Board of Education at our January 12th meeting. One, retire the current Indian mascot and logo and replace it with the mascot Warriors, with a logo to be designed and selected by Watertown High School students. Two, expand educational programming and curriculum related to Native American Studies. And three, expand curriculum related to Watertown history. While the committee also shared with the Board of Education that they agreed that the values and characteristics implied by the current Indian mascot when representing the school are also represented by a Warrior mascot, the charge given to the committee by the board did not include the selection of a mascot. Given the committee's original charge, I would like to suggest to the board that the board respond only to the committee's recommendation to retire the mascot. Buy a vote this evening. Are board members in agreement with that?
Yes.
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 Okay. The committee also explained that their recommendation that their recommendation to retire the mascot was not being made to condemn the past, but rather to focus on a unified future. The committee went on to say that we should honor the rich traditions and accomplishments of Watertown High School students and student athletes who excelled while participating in curricular and co-curricular activities using the Indian mascot and name. That reverence and respect for the past is important, and that the Watertown Indians' moniker is and will continue to be an integral and essential part of Watertown High School's history. Are there any board member questions or comments related to the recommendation to retire the mascot that we are being asked to consider? Okay. Some of the most rewarding conversations that have come out of this process have been with Native American residents here in Watertown, like Brandy Emmons, who has incredible ideas on incorporating Native American history and culture into our music and art programs, and fellow Watertown resident Wendell Dear with Horns, who was raised and lived on his tribe's reservation for 28 years before moving to Watertown 36 years ago. He has assisted other towns like Newtown in their Native American culture courses. And Clan Mother Shora Piper, whose ancestors came through and stayed on Watertown land, who currently lives on the Golden Hill Paguset Indian Reservation in Connecticut. I am pleased to say that all three of these people have already agreed to assist Watertown Public Schools in this educational endeavor, as will many others. So as the committee's second and third recommendation on behalf of the entire Board of Education, we are making a firm commitment to support the district's review and expansion of curriculum related to Native American history and culture and the history of Watertown. I'd like to turn it over to Dr. Villanueva briefly to speak to the district's commitment to that educational component of the recommendation.
Thank you, Ms. Crotty. Again, I know we've thanked, but first, I want to thank Dr. Parlato as well as members of the Mascot Committee for leading such a thoughtful and inclusive process that has really provided a space for some really hard discussions and conversations this past year. You know, making decisions that solely focus on our children is always easier said than done, and seeing through actions that are ultimately needed to make sure that we have the policies and experiences in place that are right for kids is always just one step further. So with that, from all of this, I want to just share that I would like the Watertown community and Board of Education to know that as we evolve and continue to educate generation after generation, I certainly am committed to working with our Curriculum Director, Ms. Fekety, as well as key members of the administrative and faculty teams to really operationalize the pieces of curriculum that include Native American history and culture, to bring all of these ultimately discussions to work and to life. So as we move forward this year and years to come in social studies with a new curriculum from the state in terms of Latin and African-American history, it's clear that it's not only important, but there are natural opportunities for us to also evolve with Native American history and culture to become part of that as well. So again, I'll work closely with the Director of Curriculum, Ms. Fekety, as well as the administrators and faculty to begin this work. And then I will look forward to coming back to the Board of Education with an update on our process going forward.
Great. Thank you very much for that. Do board members have any other questions or comments related to the recommendations that were made to us or any questions for Dr. Villanueva at this time?
Madam Chair?
Mr. Flaherty?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just thought I would speak up now just to put on the record, and for anyone who may not be aware, I know the board is, that I'll be abstaining from the discussion and the vote. I sent a letter to the superintendent back in November 23rd, right after coming on the board. The client of my wife's company has expressed and written testimony on this issue to the Board of Education, and out of an abundance of caution and to avoid an appearance of a conflict of interest, I won't be voting and won't be participating in the debate. So when the time comes for the vote, I will be abstaining, and I just wanted to put that, state that now before we go any further in the debate. I thank Dr. Parlato, everyone on the committee, and I thank everyone who's been involved for all the passion and all the hard work you're doing on this. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Flaherty. I'm glad you reminded us of that and the community. I am in complete agreement with your potential conflict of interest and you abstaining. So I appreciate you reminding us of that this evening.
Moving on to item I, public participation. Are any board, any members of the public wish to address the board this evening?
Good evening. Kathy Hillian, Greenwich Town Road.
Go ahead.
Thank you. I would like to start by saying I respect and appreciate the Mascot Committee's work in times that on the whether or not the Indian mascot should be retired. I respect the decision and recommendation, um, sorry, to retire the Indian mascot, or I find the recommendation to change it to the Warriors off-putting. While it seems they understand the impact of an Indian mascot to have an, not, to have on, sorry, Indian mascot can have on not only the students but the community, I worry they fail to recognize that changing to the Warriors would only pose the same concerns. Warrior mascots around the country have been petitioned for removal as well due to the images and stereotypes that have been perpetuated, the negative stereotypes that have been perpetuated. Sorry, in the board meeting, I asked them to take the time to create, um, sorry, I lost my thought.
Take your time.
Sorry, I'm, if the board has taken the time to create a committee to research the issues around the Indian mascot and takes, and makes the decision to remove a mascot that perpetuates negative stereotypes, they should not replace it with another mascot that carries an equal amount of negative connotation. I ask the board to recognize that this process has been challenging for all community members, and if it's going to be done correctly, then it should be done so that it does not have to be revisited down the road for the same problems. I ask that they take the time to put more thought and consideration into what the mascot will be changed to. We do not want to have gone through this whole process only to remain in the same position we were in prior to it, still risking students' psychological, social, and cultural well-being, community members feeling unwelcome, and perpetuating negative stereotypes. I thank you for your time and consideration. I would like to leave you to consider the following quote from a woman I was lucky enough to know and challenge you to change the mascot that was handed down to us and be bold enough to change what needs changing, because it's the right thing to do. The world should be better because you are in it. It's that simple. Well, simple to say, but, but also difficult to do, because it means you also need to be clear-sighted enough to challenge those things that may have been handed down but aren't right, those that don't fit the sense of justice and community that we espouse. It means being bold enough to change the things that need changing, just because it's right and because you care about leaving the world better than you found it. I would like to also add that I hope no matter what the outcome is, that we focus on education, not just around Native Americans, but of all cultures, races, and backgrounds. We as a school system have lacked significantly in developing and broadening our curriculum to include any kind of diversity. We have many children, including my own, who often have, oftentimes have felt unseen, unacknowledged, and misunderstood due to the lack of inclusive educational curriculum. We don't even acknowledge Black History Month or Hispanic Heritage Month, and we still observe Christopher Columbus Day rather than Indigenous People Day. And very few historic people with these backgrounds are taught, taught about in our schools. Yet we are sitting here committing to a full curriculum to Native Americans. I hope the commitment is followed through with and extended to also include all other races and cultures who have been left out for far too long in our curriculum. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do any other members of the public wish to address the board this evening?
Just briefly, Chairwoman Crotty.
Go ahead.
Hi, I just want to say thank you again to the Board of Education and the Mascot Committee. We appreciate the time and effort you've put into our request to retire the mascot. Particularly, we appreciate the effort that the committee put into their report to the Board of Ed at the last meeting in which they recognized the importance of respecting and increasing education about Native American culture. Importantly, the committee noted the negative psychological effects of Native American mascots on students as well as the potential legal liability from a hostile environment, as emphasized by both the Commission on Human Rights and Opportunities and the Attorney for the Board of Education. Finally, as Chairwoman Crotty mentioned earlier in this meeting, we appreciate that the committee emphasized that this process and change would not be about criticizing the past, but about moving forward for a unified future. Again, we appreciate all of the work you've done and this public platform, and we hope to see the mascot retired today. Thank you.
Thank you. Do any other members of the public wish to address the board?
Hi, Colleen Murphy, 175 Woodruff Avenue. Hi, everyone. Just to jump off what Ellie said, though it might not feel like it now to everyone, if the Board of Ed does make the decision to retire the Indian mascot, it is a gained opportunity for our community in many ways. It's an exciting opportunity for the next generation to decide how they want to be represented. It's an opportunity for the community to come together and choose a mascot that all can cherish and take pride in. It's been an opportunity to show Watertown students what it means to work together, to consider every opinion, to process every fact, and to do so with respect, in the end, to make a final educated decision. While Ellie mentioned our appreciation of the work of the Board of Education and the committee, we particularly want to say thank you to Board of Ed members that participated in the Mascot Committee the past five months, Kathy Rinaldi and Cindy Eastman. We were really moved by Kathy's statement in the last meeting. After many Mascot Committee meetings and speaking with local Native American and town resident, Kathy spoke about her decision to recommend retiring the mascot and the complex factors that played into it. We understand that this is a really hard choice, and hearing about Kathy's experience shows how important it is to listen to research and experts in the field to make informed decisions, and just how valuable it is that the Board of Education created this committee and underwent this process. We, we really should allow our educational leaders to use their own expertise to help our students and the community. We have had a lively and critical debate about something that really does matter. I hope that people stay engaged and work to create a more inclusive community. Thank you all again for facilitating this whole process.
Thank you. Any other members of the public wish to address the board this evening? Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Amanda, Man 40. I live at Williamson Circle in Oakville. I wanted to just address and echo Colleen and Ellie and Kathy in that I, I really would like to see this mascot retired at this point. It's not about saying we did harm in the past. It's about recognizing that when we know better, we do better in teaching our children, that the more we learn and grow, we learn to be better people and understanding and empathetic. And I feel that that's something unfortunately is missing in this town, as I have witnessed a lot of lashback with my opinion and have had personal attacks and threats for it. So again, we, we need to start being a better example to our children of how it is to be empathetic and compassionate and how to treat one another. And I think this is the first step forward to take.
Thank you, Amanda. Any other members of the public wish to address the board? Okay, seeing none, I will note that there is another round of public participation, so there's another opportunity later in the meeting. Moving on to item J, Communications. Madam Secretary?
Yes, Madam Chair, the Board of Education received a letter from Kathy Hillian, Alyssa Caporsio, Catherine Wilbur, Jeffrey Spreano, and Tim Marinkle, all sharing their respect and appreciation to the Mascot Committee for voting to retire the current Watertown High School mascot. However, they do not believe that the name Warrior is a sufficient change. The Board of Ed received a letter from Jonathan Perkins expressing his concern for the Watertown High School mascot and his belief that it should be changed. The Board of Ed also received a letter from Christine Feressa expressing her views on the current Watertown High School mascot and why it should remain as an Indian. All letters were sent to the Board of Ed members members through email. The Board of Education also received a thank you note. Dear Board of Education members and central staff office, thank you for the delicious cookie tray. My family and I appreciated your support during this difficult time. With love, Laura, Jake, Ty, Nikki, and Derek Mecca. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Rinaldi. And just another tip of the hat to you in regards to all of the letters that have come in and your reporting of them at these meetings. Your first year as the Secretary of the Board of Education has certainly proved to be a busy one, and I just want to thank you for that.
Thanks.
Moving on to item K, committee reports. Back to you, Mrs. Rinaldi, as Chair of Curriculum and Instruction.
Yes, Madam Chair. I met with Dr. Parlato, Ms. Vecetti, and Ms. Crati to review the district's curriculum plan for the remainder of the school year and the next school year. We also discussed future presentations to the Board of Education regarding progress with the math and ELA interventionalist. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to Policy and Labor Committee Chair, Mrs. Wilk.
Yes, Madam Chair. Policy and Labor is in the process of setting a date for the Policy and Labor Committee to meet to discuss the recent mascot policy recommendation made by the Connecticut Association of Boards of Education and any other policy and labor matters that may need review.
Thank you very much. Moving on to Budget and Finance Chair, Mr. Mikowski.
Yes, Madam Chair. Thank you. Not much to report. Just a reminder that we do have a Budget and Finance meeting at 6:15 on Wednesday, January 27.
Thank you very much. And thank you for becoming the Finance Chair at the last meeting right in the thick of budget season. I appreciate that very much, as does the entire board, I am sure. And as far as Facilities, PBC, and Operations, as noted earlier in the agenda, the Facilities Committee met earlier this evening to discuss the current capital improvement priorities, and we will be presenting that at the next board meeting. Governance and Community Engagement, Mr. Mikowski?
No report at this time.
Thank you. Moving on to item L, report from the Board Chair. Tonight, I'd like to take this opportunity to share where I stand on the mascot question before us. Board of Education members are first and foremost stewards of the educational experience of our students, and as such, are charged with making decisions that positively impact them. We have a sworn responsibility to do so. As a district, we work to create an inclusive environment for all current and future students of Watertown Public Schools. We must continue to look to the future, to where we want to take this district, while understanding just exactly where we are today. Our staff works very hard to build that future every single day in this district, using evidence from their years of experience, from the guidance of leadership, from expert research in the field, from extensive data on the accomplishments of students, and the impact that their experiences have on student success. As a Board of Education, as a school district, as faculty, as staff, we do not have the luxury of disregarding evidence in any of our work, and this issue is no different. We have been presented with facts from the Commission on Human Rights, the Journal of Law and Education, the Connecticut Human Rights Organization, the Journal of Sport and Social Issues, the American Psychological Association, the Sociology of Sports Journal, the United States Commission on Civil Rights, and the Connecticut Human Rights Partnership. All of their research has concluded that using Native American team names and mascots does have a harmful impact on all students. In their compelling testimony to Watertown, the Mashentucket Pequot Tribal Nation told us that Native students see our mascot in Watertown as a perpetuation of stereotypes and racism that harm both Native and non-Native American students. The National Congress of American Indians, the single largest Native American organization, stands in direct opposition to all Native American nuances in team names and in mascots. And they ask us to consider just, why are they the only group that is still treated this way? As a majority voice of Native Americans, they state that it is not for us to decide that using their identity as a mascot is okay. It is not up to us to decide if they are honored by it. We must also consider that the Board of Education maintains a fiduciary responsibility to our residents. I do not believe it is in the best interest of our school district to maintain a mascot that has been deemed discriminatory by the United States Commission on Civil Rights, who has called for, quote, "an end to the use of Native American images and team names by all Native, non-Native schools." Our continued use of the Indian mascot may also violate state and federal anti-discrimination laws and education statutes like the Connecticut General Statute 10-4A that requires boards of education to reduce racial, ethnic, and economic isolation of its students. Now is our opportunity to make the right decision. Just yesterday, I spoke again with Wendell Dear with Horns, who was born and raised on a reservation for a quarter of a century before moving to Watertown 36 years ago. He wants us to teach students that the word Indians should be treated as something very sacred. He says, quote, "It is time for Watertown to not just talk the talk. It is time for us together to walk the walk." He went on to ask us to, quote, "retire the Indians' name and mascot and truly embrace and honor Native Americans in the future." I also spoke with Golden Hill Pagusset Clan Mother, Shoron Piper, who explained, quote, "We have nothing left of our own. Other people get to betray us. Everything has been taken from us. Let us keep whatever dignity and pride we have left. An Indian is a title that your athletes in Watertown can no longer claim. In the future, students and perhaps our own grandchildren will look back on today and ask, what did you do in this moment? What did you write? What did you say? And ultimately, how did you vote?" How will we explain that we continue to use somebody's identity for the purpose of a team name in the face of all the evidence simply because our intention has always been to honor them? Tonight, we heard that this board and our district is committed to curriculum that thoughtfully teaches Native American culture and history, but we cannot authentically commit to engaging our students in meaningful, informed Native American history and culture while using their identity as the name of our sports team, directly against their wishes. We must provide clear dictates about creating inclusive classrooms that teach and celebrate all cultures. We cannot do that in an environment that has practices that are directly counter to that. Take a look at yesterday's Republican American, and you will see their flashback sports column. These columns are fantastic. They recount sport tales from 10, 25, and 50 years ago. And when you look at that column, what do you see? Pride, spirit, the strength of people, not team names, not mascots or symbols. This is about recognizing our history, preserving our history, but turning the page. Nothing is being erased or canceled. This is a step forward. It has been said repeatedly that there was no intent to offend any Native Americans with our mascot. That is absolutely true. But we have learned that is the result. And one thing is clear. The students and alumni of Watertown High School are fiercely proud of their school. When you think of your days in high school, what comes to mind? People, experiences, winning the big game, yes, maybe even acing a test, getting your driver's license, or any of the other moments of pride, spirit, and happiness that are indelibly marked in our memories. And just like that, the flashbacks in the sports column, those moments that were much more about who we were and who we were with and what we did than about any symbol or name that was on our uniform. Our strength is not found in the symbols or cartoons or in the name of a team, but in the hearts of students, in the names engraved on the trophies and listed in our honor rolls. That's our history. That's our tradition, and nothing can take that away. It's the heart of every person who walks through the doors of Watertown High School. It's in the relationships that form on the field, on our stage, and in the classrooms, in the bonds that tie our community together. Our pride and bravery is steeped deep in this town. Mascots and team names are meant to unite us, and our current one so clearly divides us. As we look to the future of our district, let's choose to move forward in unity and get back to some of the spirit we seem to have lost along the way. Thank you. Moving on to item N, future agenda items and board member comments. Mrs. Wilk?
Yes, good evening. Thank you, Madam Chair. For those of you who don't know me, I was born and raised in Watertown. I attended Watertown Public Schools kindergarten through 12th grade. My education started off at Polk School as a kindergartner and continued on until I walked across the stage at Watertown High School as a proud, respectful graduate to receive my diploma. Throughout my time at Watertown High School, I always felt great pride, strength, and was honored to be a Watertown Indian. I never viewed or interpreted our mascot as being something derogatory or demeaning. I still do not view it that way. We honor the culture of this land with the intent of respect and dignity, not with disgrace or malice. During my over seven years on this Board of Education, this vote was arguably one of the hardest I've ever had to be part of. I know we are all trying our best to look at the whole picture and to be respectful. No matter what the outcome is, I know that my yearbook will stay the same and that no one can or will take that away from me. I will always have my memories. No one will rewrite my history or cancel the culture of our town. I will always be proud, a proud Watertown High School graduate. I mean no disrespect to either side of this issue. I have read and listened to testimonies. My sincere hope is that no matter which way this goes and how this turns out, that we all remember who we are and what Watertown really is. Please don't let this divide us, but please let this make us stronger. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mrs. Wilk. Mrs. Eastman?
Thank you, Madam Chair. As long as I've been a member, I typically don't offer much in the way of my own viewpoints on matters brought before the board. I have found, happily so, that our board is often very closely aligned on the issues and concerns that relate to our students and the delivery and accessibility of equitable educational opportunities. But I'd like to take a few minutes to be very clear on where I stand on the matter of retiring the current mascot, since to my surprise, it became such a divisive issue for our community. Perhaps I was naive in not expecting such an outcry. I've been a Bruin, a Hilltopper, and a Longhorn, and I've never associated my education with whichever mascot represented those schools. In my experience, mascots were mainly utilized for the sports teams, of which I was on very few. I didn't think an initiative to change a school mascot would result in such a negative situation, when to me, it is clearly and emphatically an academic issue and one that we, as the board, have stewardship of as it affects all the students who attend our schools. With that understanding, I agreed to participate on the Mascot Committee. I felt comfortable with the group, and I also felt comfortable voicing my views and opinions. As time went on and we were led by Dr. Parlato's capable leadership, I became aware of the feelings and understandings of the community members which were brought to us by way of town hall meetings and written testimony, some of which were very accusatory and insulting, particularly those that suggested that committee, or at least those of us exploring this matter, had nothing better to do. This, of course, could not be further from the truth. At least, the board has met dozens of times over our regularly scheduled meetings this year to address the myriad of issues that have arisen from the pandemic alone. So while I am grateful to have had my eyes open to the depth and the strength of the commitment voiced by those in the community who are loyal to their school mascot, it continues to be, for me, a strictly educational issue. It is not a town issue or a personal issue. Reams of peer-reviewed and longitudinal research clearly show that having a Native American imagery is harmful to the learning environment of children. It is documented that the presence of racial symbols, even innocently established, perpetuates an authorization of bias and prejudice to other students of color. Research fuels education. Best practices form a pathway to success, and policy guides decision-making. As the stewards of every child's educational success, this cannot be overlooked. Maybe you didn't experience this bias. Maybe your children didn't experience harm. Maybe you never heard of any students who complained about the presence of a Native American mascot, and that's great. I mean, that's really wonderful. But Watertown isn't immune to the societal biases in this country. It is also a known fact that if a student isn't feeling safe, he or she isn't getting a good education. That child also won't disclose that discomfort to an adult, teacher or otherwise, who doesn't see a problem with a Native American mascot. I believe many of us, board, committee, and community members, have evolved throughout this experience. This has been a thorough and comprehensive process during which many views and opinions were voiced and listened to. The committee was presented with differing views of how Native Americans experienced this debate through experts and community members. The board heard from some of the same experts, council, educators, and community members. Months were spent reviewing research and testimony. A website was created. Town halls were held. Every voice was heard, and then the committee recommended to retire the mascot. What we don't retire are the strong feelings people have. We don't remove the history or the call for a more fully comprehensive representation of our indigenous heritage. We don't erase our history or the community that reveres it, because it's not the mascot that makes up a school community. It's the people, the friends you made, the teachers that inspired you, the administrators who gave you a second chance, the staff that made you feel seen and heard. The fields where contests were won weren't won because of what the mascot was. Titles and trophies were earned by people, the teammates, the coaches, the families in attendance. We don't retire the pride or ignore the loss that some will feel from this decision. That will always be in place, and in fact, will be instrumental in unifying the town around moving forward together. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Eastman. Mrs. Rinaldi?
Yes, Madam Chair. As you all know, this has been the most difficult decision that I've had to make since I've been on the Board of Education. And Colina, thank you for your comments, but I've had a lot, I've done a lot of thinking since I spoke at the last meeting. And we have people who want our mascot to stay. We have people who think our mascot should be retired. So who is right and who is wrong? And who do we side with? And how do we make that decision? Honestly, I don't know the right answer, or if there is a right answer. But what I do know is during this time of uncertainty and sadness in the world, I have to follow my heart at this time, and I can't take away the pride and passion of our Watertown community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Rinaldi. Mr. Belleguti?
Thank you, Madam Chair. As a proud public servant of Watertown, my views regarding the committee's recommended decision to retire the mascot are shaped by the past, the present, and the future. Our past, this is what has defined us, our heritage, our pride. This is the reason I moved here 20 years ago, the reason I love Watertown, and the reason I serve. I commend the energy and passion by all those involved. It has given me a renewed sense of why I loved living here, raising my children here, and being a part of this community. We have the present, a prompt to change this historic local symbol, a state and national trend to retire similar Native American mascots due to current perceived connotation. And most importantly to me, we have the future. How will a decision to keep or retire our mascot affect future generations? I have chosen to base my decision on the present and the future, how my decision can impact our current students, our town, and most importantly, how it will affect future generations. We have heard from many regarding this topic, and after objectively analyzing all data and testimony presented, I fully support retiring the Watertown Indian. I feel that a decision to keep this mascot would negatively impact our current students, reflect negatively on our town, and most importantly, leaves us with an issue that may present itself again in the near future. A decision for with an issue that may present itself again in the near future. A decision for us to change now gives us the opportunity to move forward together as one. As Heraclitus once said, "The only constant in life is change." Thank you all.
Thank you, Jason. Mr. Mikowski?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to open by thanking everyone that put their heart and soul into this process. Our Committee and Community Members have spent a great deal of time and energy gathering relevant facts and sharing their opinions. Those that have put themselves out there, regardless of which side they have fought for, should continue to be met with courtesy and respect. Our community has zero space for some of the attacks and commentary that we have seen in recent weeks and months surrounded around this topic. For those wishing for this process to be run through referendum, we heard you. However, this task falls squarely within the Board's purview and responsibility. Just like renaming the high school pool, approving proposed policies, or voting for line item budget transfers. Trust me, taking that course would have taken a great deal of pressure off of this Board. However, we were elected by the town to oversee the district's business. All of the information and testimony presented has been compelling. However, it brings me back to a more critical topic, the actual history of Native Americans. I will not go through the history in depth. However, Native Americans have been one of the most widely oppressed people in our nation's history. Those that came here in 1492 as settlers of our country stole their land and killed countless Native Americans. But the real oppression began in 1851 with the passing of the Indian Appropriation Act, which created the Indian Reservation System. Native Americans were banished to these reservations, unable to leave without permission. As years and decades and a century have passed, we look back and see a people that were treated as inhumanely as could be. They have suffered poverty, crime, and obscene rates of drug and alcohol addiction. Yet I can't recall the last time I heard anyone fighting for them or their quality of life. Just this week, the U Indian Tribe, yes, that is their official name on their letterhead, of the Utah and Ore reservations in Utah, wrote a letter to the Acting Secretary of the Interior regarding the grave economic impact of the revocation of energy permits associated with the XL Pipeline. I have not seen any social media posts, awareness campaigns, or letters of support. During this process, I've not heard much in the way of efforts to improve education, create job opportunities, or tackle addiction in Native American communities. That does not change our duty to always look at how we can improve our community and our learning environment. While I appreciate all the hard work the Committee put into this process and their thoughtful recommendation, as well as the many points of views presented, I do not agree with the recommendation. We cannot allow one group's opinion to overshadow another's, and in this case, there are just as many Native Americans that find pride in these names and logos. We must instead celebrate the rich history of their culture and make it known. We must educate deeply and intently the impact of political policy on Native American communities. We must encourage our residents to be advocates to drive real change that will result in opportunity, prosperity, and equality in their communities. I believe it is our duty as educators to teach history, actual history, the facts, and to translate how history impacts us today. I believe that Watertown Public Schools should have a focus on local history, especially the Native Americans that owned this land previously. We should have a focus on American history and the oppression of the Native American people, and we should encourage our youth to engage their respective representatives and demand that Native Americans be given the resources and opportunities to drive economic growth, education, health, wellness, and freedom in their communities. If we cancel out the Indians' name, it is just one more step to removing that history, and it's not something I am willing to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Rob. Mrs. Rosa?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to first start out by saying thank you to the mascot Committee members for their great work. It was done with respect and appreciation towards everyone. For months now, the Board has spent hours listening and reading hundreds of letters offering different opinions and view as to why we should or should not retire the Indian mascot. I am struck by how many of the letters received from graduates, no matter what their opinion was about the mascot, showed they had a great pride for their school and town. While we realize the negative impact the Indian mascot has on some students, it also carries an equal amount of positive impact, making us a clearly divided community. Let's take this opportunity to analyze our many points of views. One thing that stands out and makes a big statement is that more studies need to be implemented into our schools about Native American culture and all cultures. There is a lot to learn here, so let us incorporate into our town and schools this study of culture, and bring both sides together and learn from this. The pride, the spirit, the strength makes our town meaningful. I am a 50-year resident of Watertown and a Board member for eight years. My decision is made with the presentation of the educational research and impact it has on all students. I have a great love for this town, and I surely have a lot of pride for our schools. This decision has not been easy in any way, shape, or form, but must be made now to carry our students into the next level of education. So this being brought forward to the Board, and as an educational leader, I will make a decision that will support all students, that will bring our students and schools to the future and make an impact on their learning. This is important. Let us forward in unity with hope and pride. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Rosa. Are there any other Board member comments or future agenda items that Board members would like to recommend? Okay, hearing none. I'll move on to Item N, Action Item, Adoption of Items to Be Approved by Consent. First one is consideration to approve of the mascot committee proposal. Is there a motion?
Yes, Madam Chair. I move that the Board approve of the mascot committee's recommendation to retire Watertown High School, the Indian name and mascot, and that the retirement take effect no later than July 1, 2020.
What was the date on that motion, Mrs. Eastman?
2022.
Thank you.
July 1, 2022.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I second the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Malaguti. Is there any discussion? Okay, hearing none. Mrs. Davidson, will you please call the vote?
Ms. Crady?
Aye.
Ms. Eastman?
Aye.
Mr. Flaherty?
Abstain.
Mr. Mikowski?
Nay.
Mr. Malaguti?
Aye.
Ms. Rinaldi?
No.
Ms. Rosa?
Aye.
Ms. Wilk?
No.
Mrs. Davidson, please tally the votes.
There is four yays, three nays, and one abstention. The vote passes.
The motion to retire the Watertown Indian mascot as recommended by the mascot committee has been approved this evening. Moving on to Item 2, is there a motion to table the Capital Improvement Plan approval?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? The motion is, the action item is tabled. Moving on to Item O, Public Participation. Do any members of the public wish to address the Board this evening? If so, please state your name, address, and topic of discussion. Hearing none, I'll move to ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you all, and good night.
Thank you, everyone.
Good night.
Good night, everyone. Thank you.
Night, everyone. Thank you.
Good night.